Yeah, I think that's the showtime, you know? I know, that's what I'm gonna talk about. You gotta count to ten today, boy, you can't fuck with me, man. Uh, I don't think I like that. I was like, I can't, you know? So, I had, I'm worried, I'm scared, I'm scared.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting. We are gathering to my order. Thanks for taking a few moments. I want to thank our county appraisers, Anderson and Luke, for the different audio system that we're trying tonight. So I hope that this will be a little bit better for everyone. From the front there, it sounds like it's better. But please let us know in the back. Can you hear me?
Not real loud.
Little loud, it would be better.
Seats up here.
Testing now, sorry, got you pretty hot.
Okay, testing a second time?
Yeah, that's better.
Is that better?
Better.
Okay, thank you. First thing I wanted to go over again is the... There's the second right here.
Introduce members of the board.
Sure, might I start on this end? Who's your staff?
Lisa Dan, Luke Kennedy, Chris Gordon.
Jonathan Myron.
David Anderson.
Bob Phillips.
Jason Murphy.
Thank you. The guidelines again for tonight, same as last time. This meeting is to listen to the public feedback on the solar regulations draft. The planning commission may not comment, but will take all comments into consideration. As both the solite and orderly and efficient meeting, public comments will submit to the following guidelines. First of all, people who submitted or submitted feedback prior to September 16th and 23rd will be called on alphabetically to speak as the person chooses. We went through most of those a week ago. There's some that weren't here last week, so some of those may be error per day. People who saw in the end, who've done so prior to 6:00 p.m., who have not submitted a solar feedback from will be called out to speak after those, to get through those first lists. These people will be called upon in the order of the sign-in sheet. Again, each speaker will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. The speaker shall not pose questions to the planning commissioner or attempt to argue with another speaker. Again, we will also have a timer. That timer will not, I don't think, be as loud as it was a week ago. We'll probably monitor that. So some of you in the back may not be able to hear that timer. The speaker, I'm trying very slow. Speakers shall not donate unused time to other speakers. Speakers should try not to repeat the segments of others' control or revive on certain segments if they have already presented to ensure that all members of the community have time to speak. We do encourage people to comment on specific solar regulations by specific exception, but we know that won't always be possible. If time prevents, the planning commission may allow the speakers to look back in speaking order to add additional feedback. However, the planning commission deserves the right to maintain individual time limits in the total time limit on the collective area during portion of the meeting. The planning commission does reserve the right to mute and or remove any speaker whose comments are in violation of the guidelines, threatening, aggressive, disruptive, or hostile. So with that, the first person we have on that list is... My apologies, I might not correctly pronounce some of the names on our list. I will do my best to apologize in advance if I get some of the pronunciations incorrect. Our first speaker tonight is Roger Ackert.
My name's Roger Ackert. Mic check, mic check. I spoke last time, and I didn't get all the way done, and I'll pick up where I left off last time. Section 3, Item 6C, the line state "agro-photogenic uses" was deleted. And this was done apparently throughout the document. I don't understand it, I don't know enough to note. But it seems to me, when I read the definition of agro-photogenic, that's exactly what would be occurring under these solar panels, for example grazing cattle. So I don't understand it. Why was... Question for the document is, why is that taken out? Shouldn't be packed, put back in? Look to me, what will I know that it needed to be? Okay, and same, Section 3, Item 6, Sub-Ide E. You have a requirement in there, and it should be requirements, I think. Also, it says, quote, "Control the basic brush." I think that should be removed and replaced with brush and... Excuse me. Remove and replace brush, change to plants and noxious weeds. Noxious weeds need to be addressed, I think. And brush implies you're only gonna control small bushy things and eastern red cedar. There's other plants that need to be controlled. For example, or blue cedar, kettle, etc. Section 3 out of 11, lighting. There's lumens and stuff in there. I think that the lumens, which is, as I understand it, brightness of light, there needs to be a lumens limit, I think. Item 12, noise measured at the occupied dwelling of and containing existing residential structure instead should be measured at the property line. Item 13, utilities are not defined the definitions. If that's the common understanding of utilities, does that imply only public utilities? Because farmers will go ahead and run their own likes of stuffed outbuildings, powered outbuildings, and they'll have underground livestock watering systems that they put underground. And so, I don't understand if that should just be utilities, is my statement. Item 14, preservation of ag land and retention of soils are goals of these regs. Need to add protection of waters, I think. And I don't understand the statement of statewide importance. The meaning's unclear, it's not defined. Sub-Ide B and grassland should be added at the end. It has, in that same paragraph or section or sub-Ide, it has grassland at the beginning of it, but not at the end of it, so you could add any. Section 4, Item 1.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Ackert, in three minutes, is that...
Clock lives.
Okay, Janelle Cleland. Janelle Cleland. Tom Hoffman.
I believe the regulations should include a moratorium on investor wind and solar, which passed planning in September of 2024. Section D, groundwater and surface water testing should be more often in a wider area during and after construction and commissioning. The facility will be near rural water district wells, so instead of poisoning a few households, you can poison hundreds of households in their livestock. I have no idea what the plans are to resolve the problem if lead or other toxic materials are found in groundwater or surface water. That must be addressed in the regulations. How many months will local residents, Delia, and possibly Rossville residents be poisoned until they find out about the contamination? There are reports at solar sites where well and surface contamination is rampant. Section 3 out of 4, regulations must be capped at 2,000 acres, as you currently have. I don't think it should be allowed at all, but it should be capped at 2,000 acres. Fiona Bagwell from NextEra Energy said it would be 2,000 acres for Seale facility in a commissioners meeting on September 6th, 2022. We must hold NextEra to their initial dissection of 2,000 acres. I had an obvious 2022 email before Ms. Bagwell spoke, still, the scope was actually larger than that. So we must hold NextEra to their original scope lie of 2,000 acres or less. Nimaaw County Commissioners were told by NextEra, they wanted 40 turbines initially. However, later the project could not happen unless they could do in the neighborhood of 120. I believe they ended up with 121. There is also evidence that supports NextEra may have forced the city councilman to resign in order to get their way regarding the city's exclusion area zone. Thank you.
Jeff White, can Jeff white?
My name is Jeff White. I'm a retired patrolling engineer, and I lived in southwestern Kansas in the 80s and 90s. I always dreamed of coming back. When I retired 12 years ago, I invested most of my life savings in a farm that borders this project. My property has the largest watershed on Prost Street, 70 acres. This watershed also winters thousands of waterfowl, numerous bald eagle, migrating bald and golden eagle. We do not hunt this watershed because it is one of the few that does not freeze up in the winter, and it provides this waterfowl and many people in this area the ability to hunt them in the various fields. Section 2, Paragraph 1D and E, on the impact of wildlife and environment, the word "impact" was crossed out, and the word "effect" was left in, and that should read "eliminate wildlife habitat for upland game herds," because that's what it does. It eliminates wildlife habitat. They're not gonna live under the solar panels. This regulation does not address lake effect for the waterfowl in the state's solar panels for water, especially at night. The migratory birds follow under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and there is no mention of them in these regulations. The Corps of Engineersers designed and built these watersheds for flood protections, and there is no mention of them in these regulations. Heat islands that raise temperature 3 to 5 degrees Celsius, not Fahrenheit, that's Celsius, so it's a lot more Fahrenheit, prevent nighttime temperatures from cooling to wild land norms are not addressed. Section 3, Paragraph 4A, 1, 2,000 acre solar farm. Section 5, Paragraph 4F allows the applicant to apply for expansion. This is not a regulation, this is an invitation to allow the applicant to apply for expansion and allow the county commissioners to make this call at their discretion. The applicant said last week that they would not do a 2,000 acre project, which was never the plan, that's why their 12,000 acre lease. And of note, a 5,000 acre solar farm, and it says 500 megawatts, only generates about 150 megawatts. And I'd like to speak at the end, if there's time, because I have about three days with this. Thanks.
Next. Alan Anderson.
Don't call it again.
Thank you.
So I'm Alan Anderson, Chair of the Energy Practice Group, also at law firm, and also Professor at University of Kansas Law School. What I'm gonna go through is a few things. One is I've provided a red line already in the material, so it spells out where I think there are important changes, but the important part of that is why it's important to make those changes. So again, what I reiterated last time is, we have an incredible amount of history, data, and science on doing solar projects around the country. Again, it's new here, but the things you heard last time, and I heard, and the things you'll continue to hear today, are either things that are absolutely studied and part of the process, and that could be wildlife management, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, as well as the state, with rigorous processes for both of those. You'll hear things about chemicals. It just simply are not true. We even have a solar panel, there is not this chemical leak that we don't hear about. It's critical to look at the data and the science on that. If that were happening, and decades of the prior, of course, we would notice. But moreover, governmental bodies did the investigation of solar panels and those things prior to these going into effect. We have government agencies that have done those studies, it's simply not the case. We have them on homes, we have them on ranches, we have them on farms, we have them on tools and homes, we have those because of cutters safely, fire, tempests, or other things. You'll hear things talk about it relates to if there was a hailstorm, if there was a tornado, all the same things that could happen, of course. With these, they're, you know, encased material, if that took place, we wouldn't hit a direct hit, but understand with a solar panel, what they do is they go into a vertical position so they remove the chances of the biggest brush of those things. But if they do, we have to agree, just like you have in other parts of the county, if you have a tornado or a hailstorm. But there's nothing toxic or dangerous about that. You've heard about decommission? You actually covered decommissions in the regulations, and it's important. It'll be the most safe thing you have in relation to the end life than any other. And I would guess that there's only the single thing in the county that has the security in place for if that thing goes away, you will for the solar project. What you have here is a situation where there's people that don't want it, that's fine, you can test the regulations. Regulations and the planning commission body are meant to allow the safe and healthy use of this. It's not meant to be a ban. You have people that don't want to run your court. So what they're doing is they're proposing things, and what can people have a project? That's not the way it's supposed to be. And what we hear, and I'll layer this in, with agricultural land, this county has many things that are taken away agricultural lands. It's not a solar project, because if you have a solar project, it can go back to the agriculture farming and ranching. However, again, in Kansas, we lost 929,112 acres to base in trees. In this county, you lost 21% of your ag acres in a five-year period, and 90% of your family farms. Solar is the thing that could all preserve that.
Don, I'm sorry, Sherna Burnett.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Sherna Burnett, and again, I am the new developer for the NextEra project. I'm here to share more about the proposed solar project here in Jackson County from last week and clarify any misunderstandings. It's important to continue our discussion and our global work with you. We're committed to being the trusted partner in Jackson County's future. In Section 3.8B and Section 3.8I, setbacks of 1,320 feet from residences and 300 feet from non-participating property lines are not based on science and engineering, nor are they based on industry standards. In Section 3.4A, we suggest removing the acre gap from 2,000 acres to 5,000 acres, as the project will not be large enough to be desired by fires of power and effectively kill the project. Our space will be working with voluntary homeowners who want to be a part of the project, and many Jackson County residents support the project and the economic boost that will benefit the county. While you are here, many local concerns today, please remember that much of the community does support the project, and including many of them that can't attend the meeting today due to work and family commitments. Solar deserves family farms. The USDA can accept...
Hold on, hold on, just a second. The audience needs to be quiet when someone is speaking. I will ask K to credit back 10, 15 seconds to take care of the time that was just rudely interrupted by the audience. Please move in.
Jackson County has lost 19% of its family farms since 2017, according to USDA, a concern to agriculture. Solar is the city income of farms and family hands. A micro development is always temporary, and when the project ends, the link can return to creative conditions. We have solutions for environmental concerns, and NextEra Energy Resources is a leader developing energy infrastructure, and it is a priority to incorporate environmental stewardship into the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of our facilities. Again, I want to work collaboratively with you with any remaining concerns from the commission and the community. We have environmental house specialist Chris Olson, also we've also worked with Kansas University Institute of Policy and Social Research to help talk about the environmental concerns and the economic impacts on the community. We're open to discussing additional safeguards and welcome open dialogue throughout the process. And closely, we're asking you to collaborate to build a stronger future for Jackson County. The proposed regulations were a project that has a broad community support, a project that helps preserve family farms and could generate up to $136 million in tax revenue for the county. Thank you, guys, and I'm here to talk before, after, any other minute.
Don Bries? Don Bries?
Just wanted to make, I made some notes over last weeks, and just wanted to come out. I am in favor of specific regulations, obviously. I have a son that lives there, I have a brother, I have a cousin, I have family. I think someone hired, I suggested the county biologist who works for Case State would be somebody to work very close with. I don't know if that could be put in regulations or not, if they could sign off on things or not, I don't know. But if it was going to be built, I think that would be a valuable resource. They talked about the water runoff, that is a concern, I get that, and it's gonna be tested, from what I have read and learned, that it's gonna be scrutinized more than any agriculture land is today, and if it's not satisfactory to the commissioners, then it shouldn't be built. They talk about being dangerous to firefighters, that's a concern. I understand that they can shut those off, and they're not a danger if something like that happens. Making the panels rotate to keep hailstorms from damaging would be beneficial. Making, having the panels built in the United States would be great. Fire is a hazard, I think, from everyone I've seen, at least in northeast Kansas and in Missouri, the grass is growing under the panels, and keep it mowed, it'd be less of a fire hazard. Obviously, tornado is a tornado, it's gonna be bad no matter where it hits. Last thing is money. I think Delia, there's a couple ladies that said Delia is what Dowell, I feel, and again, it's not the only reason, but it would be a reason, I think Delia would benefit from this, money could go, a lot of the money could go there, should go to fire departments first, should go to Delia first, and so on, you know? And I know as a landowner, the first thing I did when I thought about this was, you know, I want to go to all the landowners, and I want to make sure we're donating money to the Jackson County Foundation, I think that will benefit them. Again, not the only reason to do it, but if it does happen, those are things that I believe that will happen.
Kevin Hoplight.
Well, good evening. I'm Kevin Hoplight, and I moved my family to Jackson County about 17 years ago. I grew up in western Kansas, I attended Case State University, and I followed an engineering career through Minnesota, Texas, Colorado, and are coming back home to rural Kansas. Tonight, I would like to address Section 3.4A and 3.8 specifically, and then a bit of commentary on industrial solar in general. Section 3.4A states that projects are limited to 2,000 acres unless the planning commission approves a modification. The modification clause has no maximum cap, and the approval standard, in quote, "Aid preservation of rural character lacks clear criteria." That's three square miles with no limit on expansion. That's three square miles with no limit on expansion. Section 3.8 requires only 300 feet from a non-participating property line. Combined with unlimited project size, this allows industrial facilities next to rural families with impact on their adjoining agricultural land. The quarter mile setback from a residence is kind of meaningless, guys. What if someone wanted to build a home there later? Jackson County has no operational utility scale solar today. We lack data on impacts to roads, property values, fire, or deconditioning adequacy. We're attempting to regulate infrastructure that we've never experienced. There's also a fundamental question. Should this require a conditional use permit or rezoning to commercial industrial? A 2,000-acre energy production facility is not agricultural use. A manufacturing facility this size would need rezoning and trigger rigorous review. I'm going to propose a phase approach. In Phase 1, let's allocate 200 acres maximum countywide, 200, not 2,000, with no modifications. Put a half a mile setback from non-participating properties with no waivers. Let's have a three-year evaluation after the operation begins. Commission the study on the roads, the property values, the tax revenue, soil monitoring, and complaints. Let's have public hearings. Let's reconsider zoning, and let's put this to a full vote on adjustments based on the evidence that we see locally. Then Phase 2 and beyond, if the data warrants, we can consider modifications informed by the results that we see locally. These are 30-year commitments. Three years to verify assumptions before authorizing larger projects is prudent planning. Listen, I'm not anti-solar on pro-communism. These regulations seem to prioritize corporate profits over rural families and farmland preservation. I urge you to tighten the regulations. Consider a phase pro to protect our way of life. Thank you.
Rex Thorism? Rex Thorism?
Lawrence Frim, why don't you get up here? Thank you for having us tonight. Want to tell you, one of you board members, you've done a great job of coming in and doing your due diligence on this. I've sat through some of your meetings, and I don't necessarily agree with it, but you have stood up and done what, right, as far as trying to let us come up and speak. So with that being said, I got cut off last time, so I'm going to start back up. On page 22, Section 4, Item 9, I feel that's extremely weak on the fire training and equipment for local fire departments, our fire departments. If there is a fire at this place, or there's a fire in a household, you know, which takes priority? So I think that there needs to be a law about fire regulations and training for the fire departments, and they should actually have their own fire department. Page 26, Section 4, Item 15, Subsection C, has a revocable letter of credit. We're dealing with a company this big. I think we should have more online credit. I think we don't have cash in the bank. So I think that needs to be changed. Page 29, Section 5, Item C, goes back to the fire departments again, what kind of training we're going to allow for them, and will they have a special fire department? Page 30, Section 5, Item 3, application fee is for $10,000. Is there a reason we don't have a $100,000 application fee? Whenever somebody goes out and builds a house, or builds a building, there's a built fee. And we're building a multi-million dollar facility, and it's just $10,000 fee, that needs to be addressed. And the next thing would be is why are we going with a pilot program payment with taxes when we can go with a franchise fee? Companies like this are used to paying a franchise fee. If we're going to have solar in our backyard, why don't make it so that everybody here is tax-free, and these people pay our taxes? They're coming in and want to invade our lifestyle, take away our quality of life, in my opinion. So why don't we have a franchise fee that would eliminate or cut back our taxes for the property owners here? And then on page 32, Section 5, Item 6, there are $500 per day fines. That should be increased to $5,000 per day. The last thing I'd like to say is, you know, you commissioner, you planning board members are going to make a decision here that's going to impact the future of our county. So please don't take out lightly. This is something that you're going to wear with you for a long time. Thank you very much.
Kevin McHugh? Kevin McHugh?
I'm going. Okay. All along. Yeah, I understand.
Kevin McHugh, Delia. First thing I want to comment on, as you hear a lot about tax dollars for schools, et cetera, I just want to make a quick note that if you look at the proposed area, almost the entire area is School District 321, which would be St. Mary's. And also, most of the families that I know that live right there are ground zero, either homeschool or utilize a private school option of some sort. Section 3, Article 3, mentions, or Article 4, mentions about maintaining rural character and preserve agricultural land, yet it says nothing about how this is going to be maintained. And I feel like this is the problem with a lot of the language in here where it kind of sounds good, but it's very subjective, but it really doesn't specify how even it's going to actually be brought fruition. Section 22, regarding emergency services, all the training and stuff is fine, but we're still relying on the volunteer force at this point. As we all know, people have jobs. It does take time to get to the station, and if there was a fire that was ripping through all the grassland, it could be an issue. I think of the fire that we had a couple years ago that started around 24, just used to deal, or used to St. Mary's that made its way over us to Delia required tankers and lots of people to get it put out. Section 1, Article 19, regarding wildlife, another thing I'd like to note, somebody else mentioned the watershed with waterfowl. Also, the waterfowl utilize the fields to feed it. I'm not sure where they're going to land if they are covered in solar panels. Section 4, regarding the application required documents, there again, a few of them do, but most of them do not state at all who will be conducting these various studies. Is that going to be a third party? Is this going to be universities? Is this going to be industry? None of that is talked about in there. I think there needs to be clear standards that need to be followed. I mentioned last time about, I've got pictures on, I can share with you guys probably sometime, about the hail damage, solar panels, they do happen, and a very simple Google search does say that they contain lead, cadmium, and other heavy metals, and that once they're damaged, that's when they're susceptible to leaching into our ground. I also hear them talk about the family farms, the loss of family for the ragland. I understand that. I have been ag all my life, although I am not a farmer myself. Farming involves more than just the actual landowner farming the ground. It involves jobs for agri-tailers, seed, all sorts of things, support, different support businesses that they rely on. Just taking that land out of use would not just affect the number of family farms, but it affects the community and other people who rely on ag as a source of income. And also, we're going to stop top science, we better actually back it up, because we all know what happened in 2019 with county science. Thank you very much.
Steve Sheldon?
I'd like to thank the committee for their diligence. You have been dealing with a very difficult task. Here is my 30,000-foot view, since I'm very limited on time. I have handed you dozens of suggested edits, which would take me about an hour or two to properly discuss. I am open to visiting with any one of you at any time specifically about my recommendations. My biggest concerns are fire, environmental risk, and financial risk to the county. I do not believe that these regulations go far enough to protect county citizens against these very real threats. You are the planning and zoning board. Zoning allows for order and normalcy. For generations, Jackson County has been divided into zones. We have areas for residential homes, farms, ranches, industry, and commercial entities. It makes sense not to have a factory next to a school or corporate hog farm in the middle of town. Zoning provides order and processes that allows property owners to buy and use property while attempting to keep peace between neighbors. It's not perfect. No system is. What's being attempted here throws a ranch in a system that your predecessors took generations to develop. We are potentially allowing a giant corporate entity to build an electricity-producing factory in a surreal quarry setting. Calling it admirable takes is putting lipstick on a pig. Fancy names do not fool anyone. There's nothing agricultural about hundreds of thousands of glass panels, heavy construction equipment destroying our already stressed roads, new transmission lines, louden burgers buzzing all day long, and significant environmental threats to neighbors' wildlife that did not exist before. There is a power plant. This is a power plant, and it should be treated accordingly. This is industry, not ag. In addition to solar regulations, industrial solar factories should be rezoned according to already existing regulations. This gives neighbors due process as required by state law, which they are denied if this is allowed to proceed using a conditional use permit. My main reason for being here is because a process that has been in place for my lifetime is being hijacked, allowing an outside corporate entity to completely change the makeup of thousands of acres of work without going through normal zoning requirements. They have $147 billion worth of resources to be able to completely destroy this county many times over. We should proceed with extreme caution. The burden of this to get this right falls on you. By allowing for a conditional use permit, we are circumventing years of established policy and due process to favor corporations. No one in this room would receive the same benefit if we were to propose a plan to build a commercial electric plant on our own property. Giving referential treatment in the market is capital capitalism in its purest form. If this is allowed to go forward, we will be prostituting our county to the highest bidder, and that is morally wrong. I would appreciate the opportunity to talk again about specific changes I have included in my draft. Thank you.
Joseph Strong? Joseph Strong?
So my name is Joseph Strong. I'm from Delia. I want to talk about Section 2, Number 12, the noise regulation. But before I start discussing the specific noise regulation, I would like to state that these concerns you have been hearing about are not just hysteria or overexaggeration. I sent you a few months ago, a June 2023 article from the Connecticut Mirror that described the frustration of residents that had to live by a solar project that was only 29 acres. They were told in a session from the solar company that they would be a good neighbor. As soon as they fired up the solar plant, the noise was a problem. And that was talked about in that article. It went on for two years before anything was attempted to mitigate the noise. The problem was, well, it was Next Era. And the reason that they said that they didn't have to mitigate the noise was because it was within regulations, even though all the elected officials said there's a problem. All residents said there was a problem, but Next Era said it's within regulations. Now, if you fast forward to March 13, 2025, if you go to the Connecticut House of the Government website, it's also on the local Fox channel, we have a fire breaks out at the project, same project, March 11, after reports of sparking wires several days prior at the site. And so several elected officials got together, they made comments, quote, "The continued problems impacting the people of East Windsor from this Next Era project are untenable for nearby students." Untenable means unlivable. Another official, quote, "I have been saying for quite some time, these solar utilities belong in an industrial zoning area. When incidents like the most recent one occurred, they can pose a real danger, a real danger, we're not making this up, to families and individuals who live in their proximity, not to mention the incessant noise that area residents have had to deal with coming from this location. This is just another reason why these utilities should be placed as far away from residential neighborhoods as possible. And we live there, so we consider ourselves residents." Quote, another official, another, this is a different person, "What we saw at the Next Era site yesterday is just the most recent example of that company acting as an absentee landlord. They have dismissed concerns raised for years about noise emitting from the exact spot where the fire broke out, and they have refused to rectify the issue. They were called out over the weekend to address sparking wires, and they failed to fix the issue as well." Now, according to-
Sorry, I'm sorry, your time is up. I would like to speak some more. Okay, Jeff White?
Just one further.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. Okay, I understand. So, okay, we are starting with the signing sheet from tonight. The first person on the list is Amber Martin.
Good evening, planning committee and community members. I would like to address one specific area of concern in the draft solar resolution. The provisions covering extraordinary events, events such as hail, floods, tornadoes, and fires, these are not remote possibilities in Kansas. They are real and enduring risks. As currently written, the resolution requires operators to submit a mitigation plan if such an event occurs. On paper, that might sound reassuring. In reality, a mitigation plan under the current rules could be little more than a written statement from the developer outlining how they intend to assess the damage, remove debris if convenient, or restore portions of the site as feasible. Crucially, these plans are not tied to any enforceable standards, funding requirements, or timetables. That means the developer could submit a plan that looks adequate on paper but provides no guarantee of action. In practice, the burden of real recovery, removing damaged panels, remediating contaminated soils, or restoring neighborhood property, could very well still fall to the adjoining landowners and to Jackson County taxpayers. In short, the current language allows mitigation plans so weak that they are effectively worthless to county residents. It leaves the appearance of accountability, but not the substance. The solution is straightforward. Require operators to assume full liability for cleanup, restoration, and remediation following extraordinary events. Mandate that operators maintain adequate insurance coverage in order to ensure that these obligations are fully funded. This amendment would ensure that those who profit from the project also bear the risks associated with it. Protect landowners and the county from sheltering and cleanup costs, and align Jackson County standards with the best practices in risk management. This issue is not about opposing renewable energy. It's about fairness, accountability, and safeguarding our community. As stewards of the county's future, you have a responsibility to set through the policy that ensures developers carry the full weight of their obligations. By strengthening this provision, you demonstrate sound stewardship and guarantee that Jackson County residents are not left vulnerable after the next disaster. Crucially, these plans are not tied to any enforceable standards, funding requirements, or timetables. That means the developer could submit a plan that looks adequate on paper but provides no guarantee of action. In practice, the burden of real recovery, removing damaged panels, remediating contaminated soils, or restoring neighborhood property, could very well still fall to the adjoining landowners and to Jackson County taxpayers. In short, the current language allows mitigation plans so weak that they are effectively worthless to county residents. It leaves the appearance of accountability but not the substance. The solution is straightforward. Require operators to assume full liability for cleanup, restoration, and remediation following extraordinary events. Mandate that operators maintain adequate insurance coverage in order to ensure that these obligations are fully funded. This amendment would ensure that those who profit from the project also bear the risks associated with it. Protect landowners and the county from sheltering and cleanup costs, and align Jackson County's standards with the best practices in risk management. This issue is not about opposing renewable energy. It's about fairness, accountability, and safeguarding our community. As stewards of the county's future, you have a responsibility to set through the policy that ensures developers carry the full weight of their obligations. By strengthening this provision, you demonstrate sound stewardship and guarantee that Jackson County residents are not left vulnerable after the next disaster.
I've heard a lot of comments to the effect that nobody cares about Delia, and I think it's important that we consider that perhaps that's why Nextera chose that location.
Yes.
Jeanette Branson?
My name is Jeanette Branson. I'm a retired military veteran, and I moved to Jackson County in 2023. In Section 2, Paragraph 1, purpose and intent of regulations where states' regulations shall not forbid, and instead shall be raised expressly allow modifications. In further states, as long as these modifications inasmuch they preserve the public health and welfare protect adjoining landowners and property, it should be neighboring landowners and property. And then states shall consider the following in Paragraph H, potential effects neighboring landowners with environmentally or historically sensitive properties. Does that mean that only environmentally or historically sensitive properties shall be considered? That could mean that other neighboring properties get no consideration at all. Why should some property owners have more rights than other property owners? Why are the rights of a property owner who wants to lease their property for the use of an industrial solar power plant that will affect not only the adjoining properties but will also affect neighboring properties for many miles beyond the project area be more important than the property owner that is an aging parent who wants their child to move on to the property and build an additional drawl for the purpose of helping that parent in the elderly aged place? Why are they told that they do not have the right to de-sell their property? In Section 3, Part 4A, that would have been covered very, very well by somebody else because this says 2,000, and we know that they want 5,000. The news in the newspapers say 5,000, and the number of potential leases say it could be 12,000. And the number can increase based on the consideration and decisions of the planning commission and county commissioners. They say the industrial solar power plant will not harm the farm land but preserve it for the next generations? Which generations? What about the millennials, now ages 29 to 44, who want to farm? And Gen Z who are as old as 28 who want to farm now? With land prices going up, how will these generations be able to afford land later if they can barely afford it now? What about the military veterans like myself who are attracted to farming because the skills that they obtained during our service align with the skills needed and hope to benefit from the therapeutic aspect of farming? The traditional family farm numbers have decreased, but there have been an explosion in the number of individuals and families who have started farming to feed themselves, support themselves, and support their community in these really tough economic times. 12,000 or acres takes away the opportunity for the next generations to obtain land to build a family in the same place they grew up, next to their family and friends here in Jackson County. The planning board has taken the time to draft these regulations and listen to our concerns, but they do not ultimately make the decisions the commissioners do, and where are they?
Joyce Hopka?
Joyce Hopka? Can you hear me? I'm short. My name is Joyce Hopka, and I grew up in Bayonne and still have friends and family down there. I am addressing Section 4, Application and Required Documents. I'm wondering if Jeffrey Solar has provided for you, under the 13 letter of requirements, number one, they were to send to you a listing of any past projects where ever located for the delivery of power for use outside of the system property. Also, in that section, by J, K, L, and M, reports from, you should have received, reports from the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, Natural Resources Conservation Services concerning soils, water, et cetera, the watershed district concerning water quality, soil erosion, drainage, and the effect on lakes, ponds, rivers, and reservoirs, and the report from Jackson County Road and Bridge Civil Engineer and the effects on infrastructure, including roads and bridges used for construction access. These reports, if they came directly from those four departments rather than from Jeffrey Solar, would be very important to any decision made concerning this huge solar project. This project will greatly impact this county. The effect on wildlife and water sources is very concerning for all of us. Some of our roads need attention and bridges need replaced. What hold a heavy equipment using roads in that part of our county over a period of several years due to our infrastructure for residents there, when many of those giving leases to their land do not even live there, so they have no worry about the roads. The commissioners are depending on you to make recommendations to them, and then they vote. I make a plea to you, please do not recommend that the commissioners vote to allow Jeffrey Solar to carry on the construction of this commercial solar power plant. What I handed you is a settlement from a company like Jeffrey Solar. They're paying the federal government, they're paying Idaho, Alabama, and Illinois large amounts of money because just during the construction, there was water runoff that impacted the water sources around, and so we could face that just under the construction, let alone a hailstorm or anything. I recognize you have invested a huge amount of time into serving on this committee with no pay and probably many headaches. Thank you for being able, willing to serve in this manner, but please do not recommend that the commissioners vote to allow Jeffrey Solar to carry on with the construction of this commercial solar power plant. Thank you.
And I would remind everyone that when you applause or express some sort of approval or disapproval after each speaker, that takes time from other speakers tonight.
My name is Hall Carter, and I have passed the land in circuit. I spoke last week about concerns about Section 4, Regulations Concerning the Huge Responsibilities This Proposed Solar Project Will Place in Our Local Fire Departments. I wanted to comment through the section 4, under Number 9, Emergency Services Fire and Solar Plan. Letter B says, "Emergency contact information will be posted on the side column by Letter C, that contains description of how the fire safety system and its associated controls will function and maintain proper working order." And on down to Section E, at amendment, the operator shall provide a fire department lock box, which is Knox Box, and every entry with site apps, shut-off instructions, and keys. So there would be no full-time security watching for problems, but would that burden be put on a long person? In the same section, under Number 11, titled Soil Sampling Plan, Letter A says, "The soil sampling plan shall measure the following." And that part mentions heavy metals such as lead and cadmium. What other heavy metals should the soil be tested for? Letter G and H in the sections say additional testing may be required, and additional soil test sites may be required. Why not just tell it like it is? Why not "shall be required" instead? That would hold Jeffrey Solar to a higher level of accountability. Thank you, guys.
Hello, buddy. Hey, I'm happy to donate the time. Hey, real quick, let's hear it for all these young people. Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak additionally to you guys. I want you to know that I'm not opposed to solar, which might surprise some people. In fact, I live with it every day. What I'm opposed to is people losing their rights, losing the value of their property. What I'm worried about is the economic and environmental issues that are certain to happen somewhere along the way. You know, it might surprise people, but some of the statements that Nextera makes in their advertising, I actually agree with. They say that $136 million in additional tax revenue will come for the community. They go on to say that $491 billion in economic activity for the region. Did you notice they said "community" and "region"? They did not say "Jackson County." And this is done purposely, and they shouldn't. Further, Nextera is using a study from the University of Kansas, so they're not really even making these lines, right? They're just referring to a study. If these numbers don't come out to be true, we'll just blame the study. They talk about creating jobs. In fact, 1,000 job years, they use these words because the jobs are temporary, which I should understand. And they admitted that it's for that 36-month construction period. How many people will be hired from Jackson County? Do we even have the workforce with these types of skill sets? I think not. These workers are going to come from somewhere else. Because these are temporary jobs, will these people be setting up roots? Will they be buying houses? I think not. They talk about economic activity, and this would refer to things like grocery stores, hotels, and auto repair shops. Did you know that the post-site is 27 miles from Topeka and 28 from Holton? Where do you think these people are going to shop? Holton? I don't think so. You know, I'm a big fan of our brothers and sisters in Chana County, but I doubt they would donate their land for our economic benefit. At the last meeting, the attorney for Jeffrey Solar talked about how this is not whether you want solar or not, it is about whether property owners should be able to decide for themselves. And I have to tell you, I was super happy to see them standing up for property rights. Right until we witnessed that lack of belief as soon as the fence was torn down and a road was destroyed, it appears to me those words were empty. Remember the lady holding the pictures? Don't take my word for it. Don't take their word for it. Do your guys' own research. Look at the background of the company. Look at what's happened in the past. Our Constitution guarantees us the right to liberty, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Howl was born to ensure the safety of the people living in this area and people across the county. I don't know if you guys have reached out to the fire departments of Point, Bayonne, and the tribe, but we have. I have not spoken to anyone who believes they have the right training or equipment. I can tell you that in the regulations, you talk about training, fabulous, but what about the equipment? If you don't put it in the regulations, what's going to happen is the commissioner's going to be right back here soon asking for a tax increase to take for this equipment. Property rights are the foundation of freedom and must apply to everybody here. I will stand here and I will defend the rights of the people wanting to lease their land, but I will also stand here and defend anyone who's affected. Even if the economic numbers come out to be true, we must realize that the benefits will be spread across the region. This is their words, not mine. The numbers do not affect the benefit to Jackson County. If this project must happen, I would really encourage all of you to make sure our first responders are swayed and protected.
Marilyn Watkins?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Watkins.
Please come.
And I choose to not speak tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tracy Sims?
Good evening. I'm Tracy Sims. I'm going to start off by drawing attention to some regulations. And let's see. I knew, but now I don't. And you guys, thank you. Ladies, thank you. As someone who spoke last week and went through three or four microphones, thank you. I appreciate your efforts. Anyway, I wanted to speak on the emergency services fire and safety plan. I can't really find anything in here from Sections A through L that seem to me to be complete. I know you guys have worked hard, and I appreciate your hard work. But we're dealing with a proposal from a company that has billions of dollars. We have to protect this community. Like a lot of people have already said, I think a fire and emergency plan and a program needs to be put into place, and I believe that Nextera needs to provide for that, provide the funds for that. I think the community needs to be in charge of that. I don't want, I don't want the security of this project to rely on a company that might not have our best interest at heart. So I would like to see all of the emergency services, I would like to see this entire section reworked. I really can't see anything in here that's complete. Wildlife mitigation plan, fuel management, mowing, grazing, everything is so loose, it needs to be tighter. My husband suggested that, I'm not saying he seems to mind, but I'm going to go ahead and say him. He also suggested that maybe this board needs to get some help doing this. He's been through OSHA regulations, have to read through and understand them and comply. And it's a lot, it's a lot. Maybe this board needs to ask the commissioners for help. Hire somebody, get somebody in here, help you guys write this. This is way too much. And he said this to me, he said, "I couldn't say this." So respectfully, I added that, "These regulations are not complete, they are not finished, and to move forward with this project would be unacceptable and inappropriate. I ask you to go back to the regulations and rework them and get the help you need to put the regulations tight on this project. Thank you."
Jay Sims?
I'm Jay Sims.
I'm the husband. I'm the husband. She's tough like a tough like a fall. So, here it goes. I thank you, each and every one of you, for being on the commission and doing all the hard work. I don't want to insult anybody here, but I don't think anybody does this for a living, and this is really hard stuff to do. I encouraged you last time to ask for help from somebody that does write these regulations. It's hard to be complete and very tight, and that's just a good idea. How about a vote? I've been told that we can't have a vote on this by the people in the county, and I'd like to know why, do you? Can't answer the questions, it's probably not even, I don't know. I think the people of Jackson County deserve a voice in this. I think that Mr. Kevin Hartblatt had a lot of good ideas in his presentation, and I would like to just express that sentiment, as well as the zoning change. Seems like it is a zoning change, right? We're not grazing cattle. This is a totally different thing than agriculture. It seems like a zoning change, not just a, forget the terminology all those in the regulations. So, how about a vote? The arguments against industrial solar are many. Large-scale solar farms require clearing vast areas of land, including forests, agricultural lands, this can destroy native vegetation, compact the soil, potentially making land unusable for farming for many years, even after decommissioning. Anyway, impact on wildlife and ecosystems, construction of solar projects can lead to habitat loss, fragmentation negatively affecting local plants and animals, particularly rare and dangerous species. Perimeter fences can also restrict the movement of wildlife. That's Regulation 3.3, Section 3.3.7. Water contamination, the manufacturing process uses toxic materials in the solar panels. If there's damage, they're going to get into groundwater, they're going to make the land unusable. Cadmium and lead are two of the chief components of these solar panels, which if not handled properly, can contaminate the soil and water. Poorly managed storm runoff, drainage destruction can also wash solar pollutants into waterways. This concerns for Rossmil as well as the wildlife in general. High laundry efficiency. The protections within this draft are thin, weak, and full of loopholes, optional, waitable, and delayed. I don't blame the committee for this, it's been working with what others have given. This draft is written to shield the developers' profits, not the people who will live next to this industrial complex. And make no mistake, it is an industrial complex. It's not a solar farm, and it's not part of the green, some green dream. The resolution is needed balance and fair, it's exploitive, plain and simple. We all respect the rights of landowners. Those rights stop when they trample with their neighbors, though. As of now, any final ordinances without ironclad protections, accountability, and enforcement will mean nothing more than a sweetheart deal for outsiders who will take profits from this community and eventually leave it with a mess. This is not about being for or against solar energy, and it's not about stopping development. This is about standing up for the community instead of rolling over for corporate greed. Jackson County has a choice, protect all but citizens or sell it out. I urge you to reject the draft resolution in its current form. Citizens of the county deserve accountability, enforceable protections, and that those who profit carry the risk, not the people in the county who never asked for any of this. Thank you.
Caleb Martin? Caleb, Caleb Martin?
Good evening, planning committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The last time we met, many people who supported the industrial power, and I spoke on personal property rights. So I'd like to raise some concerns that goes beyond technical details and directly affects the people of this county and the risk of eminent domain and the pressures it creates for landowners. The draft resolution, as written, does not hand out eminent domain powers, that's clear. But when we look closer to requirements, project maps, we can see several ways which landowners are still put in a position where there are rights at threat. First strings, mission lines and substations. The resolution allows underground generation ties, tie lines to connect solar powers to plant two utilities and substations. These lines are permitted to run off-site, through right-of-way easements. If those corridors across the property of non-participating landowners' utilities turn to state-level eminent domain to secure them. That means families could lose control of their land simply because the tie lies in the path of someone else's project. Second, project boundaries and unified permits. Project state and unified special use permits. The resolution defines project state broadly, covering the entire rectangle that surrounds a project footprint and requires that all parcels within the project be treated as part of the integrated permit. On paper, that sounds efficient, but in practice, it means a farm located outside or alongside those boundaries could be clogged in by a project they never agreed to join. This isn't technically a legal taking, but it creates the same kind of coercive pressure. Third, access roads and easements. Solar projects must include haul routes, new access roads, and utility easements as part of their site plans, and if most correct and practical route cuts across a non-participating farm, that landowner may face heavy pressure to grant access or risk losing their shared land through condemnation. These provisions, while necessary for project planning, also expose unwilling landowners to the risk of forced intrusion. The heart of the matter of this property, of this property rights are not negotiable. No landowner should ever be put in the position of losing their ground, their access, or their peace of mind because of an outside pressure. Our homes and our farms are more than just lines on a map. They are the results of years of work, sacrifice, and commitment. They are meant to be passed down, not taken away. So the question before us isn't how to make projects easier to build. The question is whether the people of Jackson County can count on their leaders to defend their rights. This resolution must put landowners first, making it clear that their property cannot be taken away, surrendered, or pressured in service of private development. That is the standard of fairness our county deserves.
Fiona Martin? Fiona Martin?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fiona Martin, and I would like to talk to something that's pretty simple but really pertinent to me, and I'm sure a lot of other people here, which is protecting people's property values when big solar projects are built in the country, county, so sorry. Right now, the draft rules do not say anything about this, and that means if a solar project goes up next to your house or your farm and your property loses value, you can do nothing about it. The company doesn't have to pay you back for what you lost, and to me and a lot of other people, that feels unfair. For most families, their home or their land isn't where they live, it's everything. It's the result of years of hard work, savings, and sacrifice. It's often the biggest investment they will ever make, and it's what people count on financial security, retirement, or to pass along to their children. If a giant project moves next door and suddenly the property is worthless, it's the family that takes a hit, while NextEra is making money, and that just doesn't seem right. Here's an example. Imagine a family farm that's been in the county for generations. They care to plan, pay the taxes, and build a life around it. Now imagine a massive solar project is built next door, suddenly when they go to sell their farm or take a loan against it, the value drops by tens of thousands of dollars. They lose money even though they did nothing wrong, and without protections, there's nothing for that family to do to get help. The solution is actually very straightforward. The rules should require companies to set up something called a property value protection fund. This would be a pool of money set aside for taxpayers. If your home or land goes down in value due to the project, you can file a claim and get fair compensation. The county will oversee the process to make sure everything is handled openly and fairly. The idea isn't complicated, it's about basic responsibility. If a company's project harms the financial stability of people living around it, the company should be the one to fix the harm. Families should not be left holding it back for problems they didn't cause. And to be clear, this isn't about being against renewable energy. It's about fairness, accountability, and protecting the community. Property value protections mean neighbors don't lose out just because of where they live. Make sure that most important investments families have, their homes and the land are protected. At the end of the day, protecting property value means protecting families, protecting neighbors, and protecting the community as a whole. Nobody here should have to lose value of their biggest investment just because companies build a project next door. And I would love to add that you've been told that we've lost 90% of our farms. Maybe I'm young and I don't understand, but how will that taking more help us preserve our farm then? Thank you.
Leslie Gallagher? Leslie Gallagher?
I have no prepared statement. It would be our families firmly and strongly opposed to those.
I'm going with the last name here. Mark? Yes. Get you enough clues?
You guys asked for the name, I didn't volunteer it. Mark McIntyre.
We were all assigned and identified by other people, right?
I know. I spelled it many times today, sometimes I wish it was smarter.
Could you clarify? I'm sorry, don't count this towards this time. Could you clarify your first name?
Mark.
Mark, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to look at this from a different perspective. I want to know why this is even being considered. Solar is an incredibly inefficient form of energy production. Proponents like to tell you that it is green. It's about as green as an EV if you pretend that the battery from the EV grew on a tree. The infrastructure requirements are absurd. 5,000 acres is 7.8 square miles. That is a vast amount of land. We are being fleeced by the government for a technology that cannot even produce electricity when the sun goes down. The only reason NextEra is considering this is for the money. That money is coming from the feds as part of the Green New scam. This country is currently $37 trillion in debt. How do you think we got to that number? One of the purposes of this board is to protect the property values in the county. No matter what NextEra says, no matter how many surveys they quote, no matter how many studies they quote, there is an obvious property value hit to a homeowner surrounded by solar panels. It is just plain as day. The bottom line is that NextEra is in this for the money and nothing else. The problem is that the money they are after is our tax money. Industrial solar cannot possibly survive on its own. If industrial solar is such a great idea, then let it stand on its own without any taxpayer subsidies in the form of tax credits. If that were to happen, NextEra would disappear overnight or hide behind one of their many shell companies as they declare bankruptcy. Mr. Anderson suggested that if you let the opportunity go by of the NextEra solar plant, you would be essentially passing up on another Jeffreys Energy Center. That ship has sailed. This solar ship that he is selling is nothing more than a rusted-out boat full of holes plugged with taxpayer money. And a previous speaker said responding lipstick on a pig. That is precisely what industrial solar is, only we are forced to pay for both the pig and the lipstick with our taxes. This needs to be killed. Thank you.
Lee Turner? Lee Turner?
Good evening. Hi. All right, the first issue, there's a lot. I mean, I could be here for a few hours, but first of all, property valuation, I didn't want to mention it, but I'm a lawyer and I've been a property tax attorney for 25 years. That means I do valuation, I've done large commercial facilities, I've represented malls and all types of projects, industrial solar facilities. To say there's no diminution in value of surrounding properties is ludicrous. There is absolutely an effect on the valuation of homes, and the closer in proximity you are, obviously, the bigger your value is going to get. But for NextEra or any of the representatives to try to represent that that's not the case is ludicrous. I'll send you the appraisal information on that from News报, so you can have that as part of your official records. All right, I'll send that after we're done. Part two, although I'm not a contract attorney, I've reviewed some of the preliminary documents here. This is at best a first draft. This thing is riddled with mays instead of showers, and there's no specificity in a lot of the phrases that you have. You really need to work on this documentation, take some of the feedback you've received. I don't know where you got the template from, to be honest, but some of the people here have mentioned you really need, is it NextEra? I don't know why you're smurfing, but you really need an expert. You really do need an expert independent of NextEra or any solar company to give you guidance on this, in terms of the standards, how stringent they should be. To rely upon, this is such a project of enormous magnitude, to not have very good codes that are written is ridiculous. And candidly, I don't know why it's called a conditional use. You're talking about an entire rezoning of what could be 10,000 acres for 30 or 40 years? How is that a conditional use? It's ludicrous to even attempt to do this project under that terminology. All right. Wait. I had so many things I wanted to talk about, but, all right, the other issue is the infrastructure. I moved here from New Jersey, if you can't tell by my accent, five years ago. We bought our own Nidelia. It's beautiful, we love it. If there's even a slight rain, I literally can't drive my car across 75% of that town. Our main road on 110th, the idea of maintenance is laying down rocks once a month. I watch the guy, and I can't get over the futility of seeing it every month. How in God's name did we have the infrastructure there in terms of the roads, the fire, and everything else that's needed for a 5,000 to 10,000-acre monstrosity? We don't. It's ludicrous. Oh, my God. Anyway, hopefully, come back and bring up some more points, but thank you.
Judy Strong? Judy Strong? Maurice Strong? Oh, thanks. Just a second here. Richard Hoffman?
Hello, my name is Richard Hoffman. I would like to speak against solar farm. Second to the noise, the construction of solar panels is going to make a lot of noise, vibration, which would give us headache. I would not be able to keep my mouth open, I'm doing homework. I would not be able to go outside without ear protection. I would just have to wear a ear plug outside or stay inside. After a few years of that, there would be a lot of buzzing sound from the new solar panels. I would also not be able to go on bike rides because the machinery on the road would make running unsafe. And the fields that are meant for cows, pigs, horses, or corn will be full of solar farms which would ruin the soil then when you wouldn't be able to use them for the purpose it was made for after you remove the solar plants. I know that landowners have a right to use their land, but they don't have a right to harm all the people around them. Thank you for your time.
Simon Hoffman? Simon Hoffman?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, and all you committee members. My name is Simon Hoffman. I would like to speak against solar farms. On page nine, section three, topic solar, it does not state that contaminated solar after solar plants are installed and they are being used will be removed. What if the acid seeped that was washed away by rain into an adjoining field? I'll send you the appraisal information on that from News报 so you can have that as part of your official records. All right, I'll send that after we're done. Part two, although I'm not a contract attorney, I've reviewed some of the preliminary documents here. This is at best a first draft. This thing is riddled with mays instead of showers. And there's no specificity in a lot of the phrases that you have. You really need to work on this documentation, take some of the feedback you've received. I don't know where you got the template from, to be honest. But some of the people here have mentioned, you really need, is it Nextera? I don't know why you're smurfing. But you really need an expert. You really do need an expert independent of Nextera or any solar company to give you guidance on this. In terms of the standards, how stringent they should be. To rely upon, this is such a project of enormous magnitude, to not have very good codes that are written is ridiculous. And candidly, I don't know why it's called a conditional use. You're talking about an entire rezoning of what could be 10,000 acres for 30 or 40 years? How is that a conditional use? It's ludicrous to even attempt to do this project under that terminology. I had so many things I wanted to talk about, but... All right, the other issue is the infrastructure. I moved here from New Jersey, if you can't tell by my accent, five years ago. We bought our own in Delia. It's beautiful. We love it. If there's even a slight rain, I literally can't drive my car across 75% of that town. Our main road on 110th, the idea of maintenance is laying down rocks once a month. I watch the guy and I can't get over the futility of seeing it every month. How in God's name did we have the infrastructure there? In terms of the roads, the fire, and everything else that's needed for a 5,000 to 10,000 acre monstrosity? We don't. It's ludicrous. Oh, my God. Anyway, hopefully come back and bring up some more points, but thank you.
Judy Strong. Judy Strong. Maurice Strong. Oh, thanks. The second here. Richard Hoffman.
Hello, my name is Richard Hoffman. I would like to speak against solar farm. Section 3 of the noise. The construction of solar panels is going to make a lot of noise, vibration, which will give us headache. I would not be able to keep my mouth open while doing homework. I would not be able to go outside without ear protection. I would just have to wear earplugs outside or stay inside. After a few years of that, there would be a lot of buzzing sound from the new solar panels. I would also not be able to go on bike rides because the machinery on the road would make running unsafe. And the fields that are meant for cows, pigs, horses, or corn will be full of solar farms which would ruin the soil than when you wouldn't be able to use them for the purpose it was made for after you remove the solar plants. I know the landowners have a right to use their land, but they don't have a right to harm all the people around them. Thank you for your time.
Simon Hoffman.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Boys and girls and all you committee members. My name is Simon Hoffman. I would like to speak against solar farms. On page 9, section 3, topic solar. It does not state that contaminated soil after solar plants are installed and they are being used will be removed. What if the acid seeped out and was washed away by rain into an adjoining field? And what if that gave the cow pasture or a cow field contaminated grass? It would contaminate the beef. And when the cattle are butchered and eaten, you could get really sick. When the crops were gathered up and sold or kept for cow feed or even to feed you or for children, it would be dangerous risk of getting sick. If wild that contaminate the contaminated grass and its body was too small to absorb the acid, it could kill the animal. Thus, all wildlife would be endangered if they ate the contaminated grass. Why don't you put them in Arizona where there's less wildlife and the land is not meant for corn or other crops or cattle? Thank you for your time.
Isabel Hoffman. Isabel Hoffman.
My name is Isabel Hoffman. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Imagine driving down a country road with arched trees, wild paragraphs, and wildebeek flowers when suddenly a strange sight leaves the eye. Instead of green grass, the thousands of acres of fields are full of rosebud and roses of cold black tangerine plates that look as if an alien had visited and left its loved ones alive. As strange as they may look, these seemingly objects have nothing to do with other plants. They are actually solar farms. As well as ruining the beauty of the landscape, solar farms are detrimental to home and country life because of the increased impact from natural disasters and the damage they could do to nature. Solar farms increase the impact from natural disasters first by increasing the danger of period fires. The solar panels use energy which could cause a little spark, which in turn could create a huge gas fire which brings so fast that it could reduce many houses to ashes before the fire is under control. Second, high wind could whip up into a tornado. The wind could catch those panels like sails on a ship and fling them anywhere. This could cause extreme damage and cost thousands of dollars in repair, not counting that which could not be repaired. Third, Kansas has heavy rainstorms. With the panels in the lake, the water cannot soak into the ground fast enough, which run into creeks and valleys could cause severe flooding. In Noah's website, there were three storms in this area listed as catastrophic only last year. And in Pottawattaway County, there were 19 hailstorms in March and April 2024. In addition to the increased impact of natural disasters, solar farms can also be a potential source of damage to nature. The panels can move dangerous chemicals into the ground which would contaminate the soil. And these chemicals do not just disappear. The soil is unusable because crops cannot be planted there after the panels are removed. If crops were contaminated soil, these would be unhealthy for both animals and people to consume. What is worse, the panels are intended to take a land over farming and agricultural uses. In the future, the stores may fail and people will starve because the panels have ruined the land, poisoned the crops, causing animals as well as people to suffer. Instead of being beneficial to Jackson County, solar farms increase natural disaster impacts and cause severe damages to nature. The solar farms are not one for destruction of God's beautiful creation. Therefore, to keep God's creation safe for future generations, solar farms should only put in. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mark Hoffman. Compliment to the microphone, the last three, please. Gentlemen, section 5, the owner operators are... There's not much specification in the documentation as to who's responsible for studies of the relevant nature. I think Nextera should be listed in the regulations as the owner operator. We all know it's their project. There's no reason we can't put them as the owner operator responsible for the owner operator responsibility is listed in section 5. Section 415(c), the NREL numbers that I submitted last week for the decommissioning, I recommend that those be deposited by Nextera for decommission prior to construction, not as an escort to be collected years later. And the language again for 2,000 acres is rather vague. I think we should keep them to 2,000 acres that was proposed initially two years ago when we first started this. And as for those jobs, this just occurred to me. Mr. Myers mentioned about the jobs coming locally. I worked in wind energy for five years. I was hired by Penn Power, they are direct services. They've done jobs for Nextera in the past. There won't be any construction jobs coming from Jackson County. You've tracked them all along this country. They might shuffle for a while. But there won't be no any jobs for the construction side. Thank you, that's all I have.
Steve Willitt?
Really wish I had the time. Heard the follow-up, but such well brought out children. Hope I can get as good as they can. I'd like to address section 3. 3b, where you struck out that project and it may not be within two miles of another project. I'd like to see that remain in place. The project extent is defined as the smallest rectangle possible to contain 2,000 acres or so. I think there needs to be separation. What I really came up here to talk about was last meeting. Our former commissioner made some comments that hurt my ear. He, uh... He said he contacted the Neimahawk County clerk. I asked him, what kind of money do you receive for projects up there? The clerk informed me that they receive a million dollars a year for the next 30 years. That goes into their general fund and they also receive contributions for road improvements and for savings. And I thought, well, this issue in Jackson County seems to be all about money, so I better check it out. So I sent her an email. And she sent me the link to where you can go, and I encouraged you to do that. You hover over the elected officials and go to commissioners and click on wind farm projects. They have a lot of information here. And it really seemed to me when I started reading their documents that they tried to hold Nextera at bay. But the more I dug into it, it was obvious even in the agreements, it means to get their way. So here goes. She said, "You will see all the agreements that were made for the wind farm. Approximately a million dollar annual payment that Mr. Brenner is referring to, included in the contribution agreement. Please look at the schedule at the very end of the agreement. This money is deposited into separate fund that we have created for Soul Creek Wind Farm, not our general fund. And we have paid for some road improvements with this money over the couple of years." So I got in there and they have all kinds of agreements. Road use and management development. They have a contribution agreement. And on the second page, it says, "Upon execution of this agreement, the developer shall pay make a one-time payment to the county of $1,250,000." And then they make annual payments after the project is running. So I began, you know, thought, well, they did the execution of this agreement was on February 26th of 2020. And they do have a scale. It's that initial payment I mentioned is nine years of $900,000. And then it's 10 years of 1.25 million. And then it's 1.1 for the last 10. So I thought, well, the initial payment plus three, four, or five years they've been in operation. How much money do you have?
Sorry?
She said 905,000.
Steve, your time is up.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take a...
Oh, Steve, your time is up.
She also said there was no money.
Your time is up.
Let me speak. What else did she say? No money went to education or any other contribution.
I'm like a California? Yeah. For a laptop? Yeah. Yeah. That doesn't work for a laptop. Okay. I use it on mine. Oh, yeah. I think it's more like a DC like the round. Yeah, I think it's fine. Okay, it's fine. I mean, she had already left, so...
Okay, we're ready to resume. I think we fixed our technical issue here on one of our computers. So the next person up is Victor Bryson. Victor Bryson?
Thank you very much. My name is Victor Bryson. I live in the target area. What I want to say today is not very long, but it is important to me. First off, can y'all imagine what all the solar panels will look like? Spread everywhere out? It will be very... Plus, my family moved here to look at the view, not to look at some solar farms. Two, if a tornado comes through your property, it will destroy it and move all the solar panels all over it. And you will have to pay for it, not them. And we'll have to pay for it, not them. Third, it is a fire hazard. If a fire starts from by the solar panels, your property will catch on fire and and you'll have to go through all these financial problems. And lastly, for the people who are against solar panels or with solar panels, don't just think of yourselves, but think of all of your friends, families, and loved ones. And think of what their future will look like. And thank you for listening.
Ann Bryson. Ann Bryson.
Good evening. My name is Ann Bryson and I live in the target area. Let me start off by saying thank you to the board members. You're giving your time and efforts freely for the betterment of our county, and that is greatly appreciated. That being said, this decision by Nextera Solar to install, what, 12,000, 10,000 acres of industrial solar panels is ridiculous, not to mention inefficient for all of residents whose lives will be irrevocably changed by this invasion. Driving on our dirt and gravel roads is already an adventure, shall we say. What's going to happen to our roads when after two, three years of semis and other transport vehicles blocking our sometimes one-lane roads? We live in the country. Accidents happen. A lot. What this solar project will do to our roads can prove fatal in a medical emergency. My family will be personally affected by this solar farm because we are trying to sell our land. And a lot of people mentioned what this would do to land value. What happens to land value near industrial solar power plant? It plummets. Nobody wants to buy land with the eyesore or pound of urine. Some of that land is going to be mined, I'm sure. I do not want my children growing up near power plants that will be detrimental to their health and walking with the toxins in the air, the pollution in the water, not to mention a fire hazard such a project poses. It is not just us who will be affected by the solar project. It is our children and our children's children that will have to live with the consequences of this decision. I trust wholeheartedly in your competency to look again at the ventilation conditions posed by a Nextera, keeping in mind that your choices today decide the outcome tomorrow. Thank you.
If everyone would please allow the speakers to speak and not be talking in the background. It makes it difficult for us to hear all of the other people and that are in the audience that want to hear what our speakers tonight have to say. Next person is James Meyer.
Good evening. I've been here for a bit different reason since Rossville is not in Jackson County. I'm the mayor and I'm here again to reinforce the importance that the water runoff into Cross Creek is incorporated in your decision whether to go forward with this project. Hopefully, an environmental study will be done. The 1,200 citizens of Rossville, all the farmers and landowners along Cross Creek from Delia Clear to Kansas River, as well as two watershed districts, are very aware of this project and are watching closely. Until I moved to Rossville, I didn't even know, excuse me, what a watershed district was. 10 or 12 years ago, Casey's wanted to put a store in Rossville on Highway 24. The city was threatened with a lawsuit by the watershed district because of the runoff water of the parking lot. It took some doing, but we were able to negotiate and we now have cases. During this process, I learned how powerful watershed districts are. Literally, every time they sue, they win. They never lose. If they were willing to sue the city over the water runoff of the parking lot, think about the... If they were willing to sue the city over the water runoff of the parking lot, think about the runoff possibilities of 2,000 to 11,000 acres of solar panels into their districts. The National Water Prediction Service monitors all the rainfall along the Cross Creek Basin. They can predict within an inch or two how high Cross Creek will rise when large, large amounts of rain falls. For example, if they say the records show that after a six-inch rain, Cross Creek will rise to 20 feet, which is flood-station. If this project goes in and Cross Creek rises to 24 feet and flooding occurs after a six-inch rain, it'll be very obvious as to why, the solar panels. Now, I'm no lawyer, but I think you would agree that the legal ramifications of such an event will be abstragamblig. I'm asking you to please incorporate the future of our city in your decision, our lives, and well-being, life without it. Thank you very much.
Sue McClintock? Sue McClintock?
Most everyone has talked about the environment. They've talked about the heating of the earth. But it should tell you everything. We only need 2,000 acres. Oh, now, we need 12,000 acres. Really, guys? This is Kansas. We feed the country. Our cattle, our crops, they're good. They're standing. And then everything is expanding. Cattle have been going down. We need more land for cattle. Most everybody I know either rents, leases. We have to have hay ground. We have to have our cattle. And ruining acres and acres of land in Kansas is ridiculous. We feed people. There used to be a sign on 75 that said, "Every farmer feeds six people." Do you really want to throw that away? For what? We're not getting anything in our pockets. We're only going to be taxed more to, to make this happen. And go look at California. They have a lot of solar panels running. They're still there. And that's the way it goes. They sell to a shell company. They don't have to do a cleaning.
This is going to be a problem with.
My name is Bill Bogowich. I live in the middle of the Target. And my neighbors have leased some land on all four sides and went home to Next Era. We have lived in the Delia area for 15 years and have loved the beauty of the land and living in a rural farm community. Last week, one of the landowners who leases, leases land to Next Era said that as a landowner, he should be able to do whatever he wants with his land. While in theory, I agree with that, landowners have never been able to do whatever they want with their land. Everyone is subject to the laws and regulations in their county for building. I have to apply to build anything on my property or even be able to add on to my house. Every city has rules about commercial and residential building plots because no one wants commercial buildings built among their homes. And we do not want a commercial solar complex built among our homes. The solar industry experienced huge growth for about a decade as costs fell and fiscal policies helped drive mass adoption. However, the last several years have brought immense challenges with higher interest rates, tighter financing, and adverse solar policy shifts in key states, which has contributed to over 100 solar companies bankrupting in the past four years based on industry data, a number unseen before in almost 20 years in the solar sector. You can do a Google search on solar company bankruptcies and find article after article talking about why the bankruptcies are happening. This is a huge concern for our county. If 12,000 acres or even the original 2,000 acres proposed are covered with panels in Next Era bankrupts like these or other companies, who is responsible for taking out, disposing of the equipment, and restoring the land to agricultural use? I am asking that you please put strong regulations in place to make sure that dismantling and disposal of the panels will be covered. I think that we should be looking at some of our neighboring counties that have banned solar farms and why. Part one of the county commercials, uh, prohibits commercial scale projects. The county's updated regulations permit solar gardens of up to 16 acres with 1,000-foot setbacks in accordance with non-participating landowners. Obunsey County only permits private-use wind energy conservation systems and small-scale solar energy systems intended to reduce personal utility power consumption, but prohibits commercial solar facilities. Johnson County has regulations that will not allow for bigger than 2,000-acre solar farm. I am pointing out the restrictions that other counties have and responsibly are explaining that the 1,000-foot setbacks and the limit of 2,000 acres for solar farms is unreasonable. If 2,000 acres was unreasonable, then why did Next Era originally ask to lease 2,000 acres for their solar farm? They are not unreasonable regulations, and I would like to see them stricter still. I thank you for caring about me and my family's home. Over the past several years of this debate, I've never gotten the impression that the county commissioners cared at all about how the quality of life would be affected for Delia area residents, but I do think that the planning committee cares. Thank you for working in fact, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, we're going to go back just a slight, just to send the list of signings today. Patricia Bryson. Please, thanks for coming up. I'm sorry we may have missed you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Bryson. I'm 12 years old. I live in the Target area. Our family has lived here for 16 years and three months. I cannot imagine what our lives will be like if the next era gets what they want. Can anyone here imagine what it would be like constantly hearing upon me how beautiful one after another? How will I be able to do my homework or study? On pages nine to 10, the topic of setbacks and buffering on and screening is discussed. I am not excited to have to look at an industrial solar power plant being installed and then miles of solar plants as every and similar in my life. Think of all the animals. All that grass is going to be taken away from them. Then that grass will be toxic for the next 50 years at least. And there is land put off with the solar planning, but they choose the farmland. I think we should think about the families who are breathing in toxic fumes. They could die. Thank you for your time.
Amber Hoffman? Amber Hoffman?
No, thank you.
Diane Denham, I believe. Diane Denham, I'm sorry, Denham? Just want to give you a document. Thomas Brier? Or Brier?
Hi, thank you for having me to sign the talk. One thing I think was brought up lately is power costs are going up with AI and data centers roaming pretty much right on month. Right now, AI and data centers are taking about 11% of the data grid employees to take about 20% by 2030, just five short years. Many cities, maybe not your own, see their power bills line up very radically, year over year, 50%. So we do need more power. So I understand why you want to have some more power capability in your county. However, I do, and I like the idea of solar in general, but I do share the concern, especially when you have it on around farmland, that there are some concerns about runoff and fire and things like that. So I, I don't, I don't think solar is quite as green as many propose it is. But maybe as compromised, I like the idea of maybe testing out 30 acres for three years is a good idea. Uh, maybe using existing solar, uh, sorry, existing industrial land, especially places that already have buildings, putting rooftop solar or cardboard solar on their parking lots as a way to generate more energy. Uh, if you, there's new battery technologies coming up, including using grates or bolt-in silicon or, um, concrete. And for MIT just had a report yesterday on using concrete as storing energy. Uh, using, maybe instead of, say, like solar cells to fill those, uh, energy stores, you could actually take power from overnight. Normally just throw it in the ground and use storage overnight and use that as a way to get extra energy. Uh, I just, I really like to pause and make you guys think a little bit more. Maybe the, the trade-offs of having this very large solar farm, uh, might not have the trade-offs. Uh, that might not be worth all the trade-offs you proposed. Thank you.
Okay, we've reached the, uh, the end of our signing sheets tonight, so we're going to take, uh, individual comments for the three-minute period. Uh, there were two people that came up during the technical break there. Uh, if those two individuals would come up first, uh, then we'll take additional people after those. So if those two people, a couple of people want to come up first, and then a few people want to start forming a line, maybe around where that, uh, around the corner there, the restroom, the leech tree. Okay, yeah. Go ahead and come up. And then there was a lady that came up over there as well.
Hi. Just got some warning.
Can you please, uh, since, since we don't have the benefit of a, of your name on the agenda, if you could say your name, uh, as a servant of knowledge.
Hi, I'm Doug Fisher. Thank you guys for your hard work so far. It's going to be substantial effort to work through those couple of comments. I do have many concerns that I won't be able to address tonight, but you need to and should have take, should take as much time as you need to do this properly. I gave you a copy of the statute that says you can't hire help. You need to hire an attorney or some expert to help you work through these and experience in these areas. To help with this past, I ask you to review again the goals and objectives of Jackson County Comprehensive Plan. This document should be your guiding document as you make these decisions. The first paragraph states, "Jackson County is close to urban areas. Urban centers in its rural atmosphere with small towns and open spaces is attracting to new residents looking for quiet life and convenient services." That is the first paragraph in that document. Well, it'll still be that way after this project. Why would people still come here when this change could come so suddenly to a rural area that is contrary to regulations that have been in effect for many years? A tornado or hail event is not a mere possibility. I've given you statistics on those, both tornadoes and hail events. In 2008, the Holiday Grove tornado killed one, many miles of devastation across the county. 1978, Claret South tornado killed four, another many miles across the county. Eight of 236 events in Jackson County in the last 50 years. Texas has the highest number of hail storms, but Kansas has two times as many per square mile. Another thing I want to close with or finish up with is on March 19, 2025, Jeffrey Solar Facebook stated, "The Jeffrey Solar project will generate over $136 million in new tax revenue that can be used for local schools, infrastructure, and first responders." But three months later, in federal district court, Next Era's attorney stated in his, her statements to the judge, "There was not a current design for this project. There hasn't even been assessment of where the plant would be located and what leach options would be used." Later, she again reiterated that she was not aware of any design plan. If you don't have a plan, how can you figure out how many taxes are going to be generated? It's simply not possible. This doesn't make any sense. Are they not talking to their attorneys? Why are they not telling you? There's been much talk about the loss of farms. The last year of that census was very COVID. Who turned your census in? I know I can go there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Graham. And stuff I'm going to go over right now, I will definitely send into the Brazzers office, so I don't want to pretend to hold out on people. We have been told numerous times that these solar panels are safe and don't leach any chemicals as the soil and the groundwater are great. Then Next Era will mine include the regulation, in the regulations, a TCLP test. That's a toxicity characteristic leaching procedure used to ensure safety of the environment when dealing with potentially hazardous materials. This testing procedure verifies whether or not specific measures need to be taken when handling certain substances. The TCLP test should be utilized for the pre-construction testing. This test will be used to simulate wind, hail, and fire conditions to assess the potential leaching of hazardous metals such as lead, cadmium, and others from solar panels. I would recommend that Next Era needs to select a solar module that's passed a TCLP test with a minimum of eight heavy metals plus mercury. No one, especially the non-participating landowners, wants to deal with contaminated soil and water while living surrounded by miles and miles of solar panels. Um, also, I'm going to send to you all, a developer must specify a solar module panel in their application that contains less than the threshold of the RCRA, which is Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. So the threshold of RCRA metals plus mercury. And then I guess the method of the mercury is 7470A. Like I said, I'll send you all this, and it's going to go over arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, lead, selenium, and silver. And that method is 6010B. Yeah, something to you. Um, we actually have a light, actually talk to somebody who's in, in this trading, gave them a lot of information that also help forward to you all. The Lexus tractor must have a stow made of 70 degrees or braver. So what is the stow? In the context of solar tractors, stow refers to a specific position the solar panels are moved during to certain conditions like high winds and hailstorms to minimize potential damage. Why stow? Stowing, uh, stowing the panels helps to protect them from the elements, prevents damage that can lead to cost repairs and downtime. So I'll send you that. And then we've got hail requirements. Um, we need 3.2-millimeter tempered, not K-3D glass, P O E or EVA casings. And I'll send you that information. And I do have some here, solar panels, damage rates, water contamination concerns in Texas. Recent hailstorms in Texas, particularly in areas like Fort Ben County, have wreaked havoc on homes and infrastructure. One unforeseen, unforeseen consequence gaining attention is the potential for damaged solar panels to contaminate groundwater. While solar power is clean energy source, some panels contain hazardous materials that exposed could pose a serious health risk. And I will send you all the information tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Matt, who's, who's next?
Anybody else ready? Can you hear me okay? My name is Matt Devater, the lifelong resident. I want to thank you all, the committee, and all of you. Time is the only asset that none of us can replace, and we don't know how much we have. I know I got three minutes, but in our lives. And I really, really appreciate that. And there's probably only two or three of us here in this room that are getting paid to be here. So I'll try to wrap this up quick. Speaking to some statements, Mr. Anderson made, and again, I want to thank you guys for considering our county. That does represent something that means something to us. But when he talks about that it's all safe, there's no chemicals, I think we've covered that the panels have some chemicals in it that they were to be reached. It's also a consideration of the posts that we're putting to ground. If they're galvanized, that does leach and it is measurable. I think that it would be appropriate in the regulations to have a test in advance for baseline of the soil and the surrounding water. So there's never any confusion in the future. Oh, that copper, or that lead, or that cadmium was there. And, you know, that'd be part of, those tests need to be done before permits issued. Decommissioning, again, NextEra is very confident. They should go ahead and have that money in escrow for the county. Mr. Burnett spoke about the temporary use of the land. Thirty years in the grand scheme of geology is nothing. And our lives have been missed in reality. And in 30 years, most of women in this room is probably not going to be around anymore. We need to think about our children, our grandchildren, and what we leave for them. So if it's properly decommissioned in 30 years, it will be also a significant amount of time. They're saying three to five years to build. Well, there'll probably be three to five years to take it down properly. And then to get all of that replanted back to whatever, grass, trees, et cetera. So you're really, by looking at maybe 40 years, maybe 50 years before the grasses and the trees really start to take root and, you know, look like something again. That's a long time in our short lives. I'm 51. If any one of us as a citizen in Jackson County wishes to build anything non-accident, we're asked to pay a permanent fee based on value. If NextEra is this confident this project, they should be willing to pay us upfront. Someone mentioned a franchise fee. I think that's appropriate. Or somewhere they're upfront, money should be applied. And I would ask you guys lastly, to take a look at the regulations, insert, instead of industrial solar, corporate hog farm, permanent landfill, or even a micronuclear plant. Because we need to be thinking about, these guys have these leases on these properties. If this doesn't work out, or that at some point they decide to take a mortgage against their leases, these might be some of the options that come before. So again, we'll get right back to the drawing board here soon. And while I'm wearing a Bobby Kennedy shirt and hat, I thought I would plug green. Because I know there's people here that are in for the green energy and the green output. This is truly about the environment, paying the local owners as well as speaking of development. Maybe we should invite one of the neighbor's skeptics to come to Jackson County and plan all that farm ground together. Thank you.
Okay, one of them. Remind us of your name, please.
Thank you. Dana Comishes.
Your name again?
My name is Pamela Brown, and I live in the Target area, about one mile north of Delia. I don't know the exact figures, and I don't know if anybody really does. I've heard the figure of $1 million per year that NextEra was paying in Nemo Hall County. I've heard $136 million over 30 years. Just to put that in perspective, and I looked it up, NextEra's CEO makes, with his salary and benefits, $23 million a year. So that shows you where NextEra's, their priorities lie. We've heard over the last couple of years, residents of Nemo Hall County saying that NextEra is not to be trusted. Jackson County had a lawsuit, had to sue NextEra. The lawsuit was eventually dropped, but they had to sue NextEra to repair a road in Jackson County. Why we would even be doing business with this company is beyond the hand. As a nurse, if I drop a piece of equipment that has mercury in it, there's, it's considered a contaminant, and we have special procedures cleaning that up. I can't even imagine millions of solar panels getting damaged. I've followed this over the last few years in the community, on social media, and in public meetings, including this one. And it's glaringly obvious that most of the citizens of this county are against this project. So I would encourage you to rip the regulations in half, send it to the commissioners, and tell them no solar in Jackson County. Thank you.
Remind us of your names, please.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. My name is Simon Hoffman. Just think about it. Jackson County is a beautiful country with rolling hills, crops, swan for fields, and fields of cattle. Why everyone has a solar plant? Jackson County, instead of all this beautiful land, will be covered with these black, flat solar panels. Kansas is called the sunflower state for a reason. It has the most sunflowers. How can it still be known as the sunflower state if there are, in solar panels everywhere and no room for sunflowers to grow? So just think about it. Do you really want to destroy one of America's most beautiful counties? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name is Steve Sheldon. I appreciate having a second opportunity to speak. I can do a little more relaxed stance. I carry with me the regulations I gave you. I mentioned the 30,000 acres. I'd like to kind of start to drill down on that a little bit. The first thing I'd like to address is, this will be on page nine, section four, this is regarding the 2,000 acres. So currently, it reads what it reads. Well, let me back up a little bit. I agree with the gentleman, I work with a bunch of lawyers, right? So I'm very used to legal, legal language. I'm not a lawyer myself. But when I first looked at this document, it is completely void of tangible things, right? It's very broad, it's very loose. Any of our lawyers would rip this up and say, this ain't happening, right? And that concerns me as a resident. I mean, if you want to have solar great, your job is to protect the residents of this county. So my concern, working with somebody who suits a lot of people, we have 200 current lawsuits on the books, we are opening ourselves wide open for a lot of lawsuits if this happens. So that's a big concern of mine. So again, going down a little further, as far as the 2,000 acres, I think it should say, "In all of Jackson County," period. Unless a public referendum is held to approve additional acres, period. That is very simple language. It's not loosey-goosey. It's very easy to understand. 2,000 acres is it, no more, unless approved by a public referendum. So that's one area. Then if you turn to page, and I've got all kinds of red stuff, if you see this, I wanted to just hit my highlights. The next is page 15. I added at the very bottom, this talks about, oh, I'm sorry, noise levels. It says an hourly average noise level. When I was first in the investment business, we would say, "The average return on something is such and such." And my boss would say, "You know, if you're standing on hot plate and you're standing boiling water, your average temperature is comfortable, but by no means are you comfortable." So if you have an average decibel level, that means you have very highs and very lows. So they can go 100 decibels to nothing, and then over that hourly period, that would average out to 50, right? But by no means would that be the least bit comfortable if you have to listen to bang, 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 bang during construction. I also eliminated the construction part of it. I don't think anybody should be forced to sit around and listen to bang, 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 bang. And if y'all haven't seen the videos that are out there, imagine living out there for two years, appearing clang, 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 for eight or 10 or 12 hours a day. That's just, my time in the service, that would have caused, if you tortured somebody with that, that would have gone against the duty of contention, I think. Anyway, thank you for your time. I really do appreciate you.
I have to clarify again. People have talked about the devaluation of our property, and the people that are adjacent, very close, are the ones that could affect the numbers. If you're on the east side of the county, probably not, not affected. But I'm more concerned with the devalue of our country. And these projects that cannot stand alone and pay for themselves, cost America. And they cost America billions of dollars that should be going into our treasury, that could be paying our debt now. And it doesn't. And one reason that these, that this, my power cost has not gone, ever since we've started adding green energy, my power cost has gone up. The reliability has gone down. And there's a reason to that. They don't run 24 hours a day. Those power plants have got to come on and off, on and off. And it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to take a power plant that's running on coal or natural gas or nuclear to power back up. And that's why our costs are, it's more than it should be. So the, it's a logistical nightmare for the power plants. And in section two, paragraph 1G, it talks about experience, reputation, financial ability. In 2022, ESI, which is a subsidiary of NextEra, was fined $8 million for killing 150 eagles in eight states. And what they said they didn't do was file an ETP. It's an eagle tape permit, which in reality, it is an eagle death permit. And what it does is, if they had filed a permit, all they have to do is pay $29,000 for every eagle they kill. That doesn't sound like a very good reputation to me. Florida Power and Life, which is the parent company, the NextEra, lobbied millions and millions of dollars against net metering in the state of Florida, which allowed residents to take their power from solar and sell that power back to when they didn't need it. And they lobbied against it to control the market. That's not a very good reputation to me. The other thing is, the business I was in, we had to buy a bond for every well we ever drilled. They need to buy a bond for this, for if they go bankrupt or whatever. Thank you.
Hey, my name is John Wharton. I do live in the Delia City code. A lot has been said tonight. I'm proud to see everybody with voice and their opinion on what needs to be done, what needs to be changed. I'd like to speak to you about section 5-1C, which states that the operator shall update emergency service and fire safety plan annually in collaboration with emergency management. In my opinion, it needs to read, "In collaboration with Jackson County Emergency Management and Local Fire District." I'm on the Delia Fire Board, and the local fire district are the people that know exactly what their needs are, what the difficulties of dealing with emergency in their area is. Every district's a little different. The topography is different. The roads are different. The access to water is different. And so all of these considerations need to be taken into account. Also, on section 4-9, it reads, "24-cell emergency access plan or management of extraordinary event at the solar installation shall include," whereas I think it should read, "24-seven emergency access plan for management of an extraordinary event at the solar installation shall be produced in collaboration with the local fire district," for all the reasons I stated previously. It makes sense that whichever local fire district, this installation decided that, has some say in what kind of management activity of extraordinary event. And how are they going to know what needs and training and equipment the fire district has if the fire district's not consulted? And closing, it's kind of hard to wrap your head around the scope of this project. So just to give you an idea, this is a regional example. What I've given you is an aerial photograph of a 20-megawatt installation built by Energy Energy Solutions in conjunction with the Monarch Cement Company in Humboldt, Kansas. It sits on, what you see there is sitting on 92 acres. And to reach the stated goal of 500 megawatts of generation capacity for Jeffrey Solar, you would need 25 such installations. So this, this is what you're creating these regulations for. This is the scope of the project that these regulations are meant to control. So thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name earlier. Could you repeat?
Yeah, John Wharton.
So, I'm trying to choose a strong, just to finish up what I was talking about. What I was trying to present when I was talking before was the idea of using other people's mistakes so that we don't have to make them. People were talking about making a pilot solar plant, see how great that's a very good idea. But on top of that, we don't have to do that because people have already been doing this and making mistakes. So I mentioned East Windsor, NextEra site that had the problems. I'm going to add one more. In June 2025, this is not necessarily NextEra, I don't know. The Suffolk News Herald in Virginia reported that in response to community concerns noise generated by solar energy facilities, planning members strengthened setbacks and noise regulations. They had to go back and fix the regulation. The planning director quotes, "We do know and have learned that the equipment these use can be noisy." Okay, so what they did was they took anything larger than five megawatts. Now, on our scale, this is like a baby solar field. It's 1,000 feet from the property line now. It was 100 feet. They said, "No more. It's got to be way back." Substations 1,500 feet from the property line. The mayor said, quote, "I'm just looking at setbacks going from 100 to 1,000. So the needs aren't just a couple of feet. We verified that those changes will preclude any problems that we had before." Why didn't they check before the problem? That's what we need to do. We can't have that because once this is done, we're stuck with it. And so please don't shrink the setbacks. Quarter mile is, we argued at the very beginning of this that wasn't enough. Okay, so 1,300 feet, this is what is now starting to become the standard. And so that's where you should feel comfortable. And it's 1,000 feet from the property line, not the residence. It's the property line. Everybody's paperwork is saying property line. And, you know, we have to do this, this study really fast because everybody seems to want to work really fast. But in any case, since we were describing credentials, I do have a PhD in chemistry. I do understand the heavy metal problems. What is being described is true if the panels are cracked. So the things that Mrs. McCain said about needing a temper class is very important because we're talking about millions of panels. Or at least, well, the biggest one in Canada, it's 3,000 acres, and they have a million, so 0.3 panels. So if you can imagine a pilot that was cracked, sorry, I was talking. So if you can imagine a pilot that was cracked, sorry, I'm just talking. Yes, sir.
I'll finish again. I've just got a couple of things that I missed the first one around. I do have many more things that I would like to address to, or not to. One is about the potential storm hazards and fire hazards. Why is the county burdened with the security, the fire protection, and damage from storms cleaned up? There is no reason for that. This is a major company. I'm asking you guys, because they've not told you what they're going to do, I'm asking you guys to send them a letter asking for a detailed plan of how they intend to clean up the damage from a major storm and how they intend to reimburse the citizens of this county for that. If they don't answer a detailed plan, then you know their answer. Also, in your penalty section, in their letter, they want you to change it to a civil penalty. I think a $500 fine was the maximum Muzoni statutes were allowed. But one you don't have listed in there that I recall is that you need to add all of the civil penalty remedies that are related to Muzoni statutes. And I can give you those in the future, but they are in the Kansas statutes. Another thing that, with regards to hiring experts or asking experts to come in, we've got experts right here in this county, but no soil health. I think he's up next. Thank you.
So first, I want to appreciate the time that Vinnie's put to this effort. In regards to regulations, what I've read with some of the parts of regulations, there's a lot of language in there that says "shall." When you look up the legal definition of "shall," it can be interpreted by court in one of the different ways. Some of the language should be "must," as in must have certain environmental impact studies done on potential consequences of the panels being put in. And I'm going to speak more on behalf of that. What my background is, is as an armor rancher and as a soil health expert. We have less than 3% of our native grasslands still left within our state. And I'm sure there's native grasslands within this project area that could be affected. We don't even understand the ramifications of the loss of the state of grassland that we've already acquired. You can't lose, afford to lose anymore. These ecosystems are very, very fragile and very, very essential. I can just give you one case and example of what I'm talking about. We've done a little application of insecticides in agriculture to the point we can't control flies on livestock. In fact, an entomologist at Kansas State University told me that they want to research a new insecticide. They have flies from Kansas brought to them because the flies from Kansas are so resistant. We are just starting to do research here in our county on dung beetle populations because our last effort now to control flies is a dung beetle species. And amazingly enough, we do have the dung beetles in our county. But as we put these products in, we disrupt those ecosystems and those, those essential things that we need within the grassland and agricultural system. So again, I want to appreciate the board for taking the time to listen to my comments and your willingness to serve this community. So thank you.
I just wanted to go over the handout that I gave you. So it's about Section 2, Number 12, Noise. I made an attempt to draft a section that was a little bit more rigorous. The regulations must be focused on the fact that the area in question is very rural, has a very low baseline noise level, and residences have chosen this area to live because of that fact. Where the regulations, baseline noise levels for daytime and nighttime hours should be established for each location where a protected location, solar project interface occurs. And I have a definition in there for protected location. A third-party evaluation, third-party evaluation could or should be done using industry standard measurements, or the accepted value for a very quiet rural region like this is about 26.5 decibels weighted A could be used. Daytime noise limit should be based on that, would be 46.5 at daytime and 36.5 decibels nighttime, again weighted A, using this 26 decibel baseline. But if actual baselines are measured, the accepted noise level limits are typically set at 10 decibels over these measured baselines. In Michigan, an official health person put a document out, actually said that it was a health risk to be by using industrial solar panels. And one of its sections is about noise, and that's where people are getting this over the 10-decibel baseline. The daytime nighttime period should be defined with tied 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for daytime, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM respectively for nighttime. Otherwise, noise levels could be unacceptably high during the evening hours in the summer. Noise limit levels are usually referenced either at the property line or 500 feet from the sleeping quarters of the home of the non-participating resident, not the door, which is, whichever is closer to the project. The current regulation draft lists limits of 55 and 50 decibels at the home. This is not acceptable, and it's not what other people are doing, and they've learned better if they did. And such high allowable limits have been abandoned in several states for more strict limits because of the recognized annoyance to residents. Tonal and SDR noise limits should be also addressed specifically in limits set in regulations since these noise types are more irritating to people and wildlife. These specific noise types require noise levels that are 5 to 6 decibels, meaning it's lower, more restrictive than the overall noise limit levels. Finally, there should be specific fines for noise violations, deadlines for corrective actions, and further penalties for slow remediation or repeated defenses attached to the sample revised draft. Thank you.
I think I remember your name from other, but could you just repeat it? I'm sorry, you did that twice already, but.
So it's Dr. Joseph Strong.
Thank you so much. Are there any other speakers tonight?
Yes, please.
Again, Veezer, any response?
Roger Accaret. And I'll pick up where I had the call. Section 4-1, Sub item G, Plan Panel Installation Specs. Panel management in the definitions tend to be referring to the entire structure, the pole, the frame that the panels are installed into, or call on all of that to panel. I think that needs to be defined a little better. And it needs to include all the installations. There's going to be fence, there's going to be new buildings, there's going to be power equipment. So I think all the installations need to be shown in specs or. Section 4, still need to address any existing solar installations. I don't know if that's covered automatically by existing codes or the laws somehow, but it'd be nice to check that. Generally, I think that type of thing is grandfathered in. Farmers use solar for their livestock. Item 1G, again, this needs to say all structures. Item 3, I, existing swam, channels, ditches, or streams. None of those terms are defined. Also, I did some work on this, what we used to call ditches. The Army Corps of Engineers called, NRCS calls intermittent streams. But it isn't all the way. It's only partially. The Army Corps of Engineers defines that, but we lies on that. And I don't know if that needs to be mentioned in that, or not. That's something to think about. Item J, out of statewide importance, put a quote. I don't know what that means. It's not defined, and so, I'm out of statewide importance. They don't like to follow it for me. I don't understand it at all. So if you can clarify that somehow. Item K, I don't understand in all of this why we just say, well, you've got to protect residential from noise and et cetera. Seems like there's a lot of businesses around it. The farmers on three sides mean businesses other than their farming. So agricultural and business in addition to residential. Item 4, I, land disturbance is not defined. I think that needs to be added there, and soil, land disturbance being soil disturbance. Item J, again, I need to insert in lumens for the light, because that's, I think, the brightness of the lights, so that should be, have a lumens set on it.
I'm sorry, fragrance.
Thank you.
Steve?
There we go.
I'm sorry. We can switch to next to the other one.
Well, like I said.
You can state your name again.
Steve Mahoney. Like I said there earlier, there's a lot of information on the Nemaha County website, and I encourage you to read some of that stuff in process and in regulations. I would like to let you know too that when the thing, agreement was signed on February 20th of 2020, 26th of 2020, the three commissioners that signed that document have now been replaced. One got elected out in the 2020 election, and the other one being since replaced in 2022. So it has no bearing on this. Just wanted to let you know what the history was. But I imagine everybody should have been appalled in 2019 when they came. To my understanding, what's Nemaha County, they were going to do 20, 30, 40 windmills. This is their site plan of almost 150 windmills as dated 2019. I don't know if that was up front to the citizens, but why are we being told they want to build a 2,000-acre farm that releases 12,000 acres? This is their haul road map. Now, I don't know what you all think about their heavy equipment going across, but the best road out there is 158 Road, and how about the tribe from that, something to say about that? And I hope you all just talk to the tribe. They've had their attorneys at your meetings. The one thing I really question, I've heard this number several times, it was under Halt Papers, by the way, we made it front page. That Sherman Bennett said, who's the project director for the company, said that the Jeffrey Solar Project expected to generate 136 million in additional tax revenue for schools, roads, essential services in the county. And they didn't get that Nemaha County. First of all, I'd like to know how he came up with that and played a figure. And second of all, they didn't get it at Nemaha County, so I wouldn't hold your breath for it happening here. Now, to me, I appreciate all the work you guys do because I held that position for five years. Got tossed off for trying to have a solar moratorium, add it to the wind. Now, to me, the history of this whole thing with the commissioners and the experiences I've had with them, I'm just saying, I feel like this is a doggone show. They're going to push you no matter what you say. I encourage you to listen, everybody, and make it as strict as you can. This is property. People at least the solar have that right, but they don't have the right to contaminate, dejoin, and handbake, or explode a county, and possibly poison Banner Creek. That's a serious thing, and you've got to weigh your thing. Is this worth the risk for a little or no monetary reward? I think like the lady said before me, I'm going to tear these regulations up and go for a moratorium.
She wanted to speak next.
My name is Janet Davis. I just wanted to make a few comments to you. I know this is tough. I've been through this for years, since the 70s I've been involved in planning zones. So it's to my heart because it's worth it. If you're aware with global issues, Larry Finney, who is the chairman of Blackrock, CEO of Blackrock, owns Nextera, said three months ago, "We are done with wind and solar. They're not efficient, they're intermittent, and we need more power than what they can do." So this is Blackrock, who owns Nextera, and they said, "We're done. We're not going to do anymore." So I think the solar is, it runs 23% efficient. If you go to nrel.gov, you can look up in Kansas, the counties that have said no. No. And at last count I knew of, it was about 18 counties that had said no to the green scam. No. Nope. So, and there's several counties around you that have said no. Osage County had a ban. That's going to stop Nextera. We had a meeting last week where they're trying to present to the commissioners, even though we have a ban and a 25-year moratorium against it, they're still trying to push it in and push it in. Thankfully, we have two of our three county commissioners that are staying firm what they were voted in for, and said, "We know this is what the residents..." We had a million meetings, as you have had, and we had to move to a bigger venue because we couldn't hold all of our people. So I really liked Ms. Brown when she said, "Tear them up. It's what we did and say no."
Again, I have just one more thing. We now have the best solar plant that could be designed. It may need to be updated with some maintenance from local farmers, and I'm one of them that needs to do a better job. It just doesn't send electricity to other cities and out of states. That solar plant is the grass, the forests, and the trees that currently exist and that God designed. You can't improve on that. It doesn't send electricity out. It grows food for this county and the world.
Are there any other speakers this evening?
So, again, in front of Roger Accaret. Section 4, Item 5C, construction impacts, noise, vibration, lights, waste management, water supply, et cetera. Things should be added, site disturbance and surface damages. Item A, again, the agri-bolt hay thing. I don't understand why it's taken out. This can't imply to me that because we're taking out that out agri-bolt hay, maybe they're not going to allow cattle grazing underneath and around them? I don't know why this is. I'm stumped by it. Item 12D, need to address construction and operation waste somewhere. I think it only addresses decommissioning or something. But anyway, need to address construction and operation wastes somewhere. Also, something to affect, need, need to insert, waste shall not be burned, buried, or disposed of on the site property. And that's all for panel. Thank you.
My name is Tom Hoffman. First of all, Roscoe was talking about the watershed districts and their authority. Cross Creek Watershed District does have a conflict of interest because I believe half of their members are these signed, so they must recuse itself in any decision they go for, which is on the run off. Don't think they have the authority for that. Also, the parent company must be listed as an owner operating, in this case, Nextera. Also, the parent company must be listed as an owner operating, in this case, NextEra, because it's subsidiary letter credit, is basically worthless when they're out of business. There must be money, one hundred percent in escrow prior to the start of the construction for any decommissioning estimates. Just so there's money there, there can be problems during construction, and these guys bail, who knows? Noise levels, I agree with Dr. Strong, the ten dBs over ambient and proper lines. I've seen the same study that he's in. He's just better at conveying than I am. Setbacks, I believe the setback should also be from property lines without guarantees, not just from households. I have a permit to build a home at the edge of my property. I have stock construction, because I don't want this thing next to it. Regulations say must be existing occupied residents. Of course, it's not even completed. We have stock, because we're not going to put a home next to this facility. I think that's basically it. By the way, just so you know, Jeffrey Energy Center was never going in Jackson County. They had a new domain. They wasn't going here with Jackson County money there or not. They needed water from the Kansas River. So if you know that, it's not in Jackson County. Okay? There was also great rail access. There was, uh, no moves that say had to move. So the property procurement was very, very inexpensive. Uh, there was a number of reasons for it to go where it went. So this excuse about we forced out Jeffrey Energy Center, that doesn't fly. That is a lie. That is just a fairy tale people have been saying over and over again. Oh, by the way, I just heard this, that there is a letter, you'll have to look this up. Northeast Jackson County, a family has been approached for solar leases, for industrial solar leases up near Whitey. I don't know if that's in Jackson County, but I don't know. Just making a point. Thank you very much.
Andy, my name is Joyce Hoffman. And I just heard the gentleman's, uh, comment about, uh, somebody at Whitey being approached about, you know, uh, leasing to NextEra. We had a phone call last fall, and when I heard what, you know, what it was about, it was NextEra, I can't say for sure, it might have been Jeffrey Solar, but that was the content of the phone call, because we own land right outside of Circleville, and they wanted to know if we would be interested in leasing that land for a solar project. And I said, no, and don't call back. So I don't think they intend to, intend to stop. I think they wanted to go farther than what we can even imagine. Thank you.
Steve Sheldon, I'd like to close this out if I could, but I think there's something behind me. I mean, I've had a long night, and I promised him I was going to speak for the full three minutes. Two things. If I could get on my knees, my knees are sore, um, I'm getting old, but I would beg you to do two things. Um, one would be to seek outside counsel. No lawyers on the board anymore, right? Have somebody independent look at this. These are essentially laws that you're writing. Not a top look, but. Second thing would be to look at a civil engineering firm sometimes, maybe who specializes in electrical plants. Um, that is a high degree of specialty, but, uh, you know, I don't want to insult anybody on this board. I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know the first thing about electricity. We're talking about making an electric plant here. And I think we need to seek outside counsel for those sorts of things. And lastly, um, I had a conversation, and I'll pass this on to anybody who's interested, I'm happy to pass on his name, but I did talk to Wildlife and Parks. Um, they are highly concerned about this area. As a member of the public, they would not comment to me. They said, but if somebody on the planning commission would, uh, would visit with them, they'd love to have a conversation with you about this project. So I would highly encourage you to reach out and contact them, seek their input. And finally, I'd like to thank all of you for the great job. The patience that you guys had to take this meeting and I just, is pretty good. Uh, we all owe you a big round of applause. Thanks. You guys have your work cut out for you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, my name is Brett Larson. Thank you for being here and thanks for listening to me again. The thing that's been bothering me is what's come up tonight about the Jeffrey Solar and the Nehemiah County payout. I really think you guys need to investigate that. When they tore up two fifty-four road and they, Jackson County had to take them to lawsuit to get the money to fix that road, something we really need to think about. The decommissioning deal is a major thing. I said earlier, we can have that money upfront in cash rather than that. And as far as, I spoke about it again, the pilot program. We need to have something more than the pilot program. I mean, the taxes is great, but we need to have that money upfront. I have solar myself. I think solar is really inefficient. I don't know why, but I've made your solar plant in the middle of last week. Very few, very few good days for solar. I think it's like two hundred and some days, if you don't put me on that, that are good for solar. And if you don't get solar after the sun goes down, you don't get solar, and rainy days you don't get solar there. This would be a better plant for them to put in the desert or someplace that's more suitable in the South range. Where the range we're in is very poor for solar, and I'm speaking from experience on that. But anyway, thank you for letting me speak. You guys need to do a job on this one.
Hi, my name is Anisha Blair, and I live in the targeted area. I am a wife and mother of six children. I'm here to represent my fellow moms and friends and neighbors who are not able to be here tonight, but are also devastated about what this indulgent industrial solar project would do to our daily lives and into our children's future. The wholesome regulations that stand out most to us are the lack regarding our fire. In section four, sub nine, letter J, there just isn't enough said there about fire that ensures the protection of our families and our homes when a fire breaks out. We have talked to the local fire departments and know several of the men on there, and they have told us that they are not equipped or trained to handle these kinds of fires. Please make very clear and strict regulations that will ensure our family's safeties. Then in the, the property value protection, there's no clause requiring compensation for decreased land value. We, the neighbors, will carry full burden of the devaluation. Maybe add requirements for property value, guarantee or compensation fund for adjacent, adjacent landowners. In section three, in section one, three, extraordinary events, one says damaging, damage is due to wind, storms, hail, fire, flood, earthquakes, and operation must provide a mitigation plan. This would directly affect us, maybe require operators to assume full liability for restoration, even in extraordinary event, events. Mandate insurance coverage for such disaster. Our families will be subject to three years of industrial morgues in our backyards, three years of pounding holes into the ground for eight hours a day, five days a week, and three years of strangers next to our land while our family tries our best to live up, continue living our lives. I agree with what Pamela Brown said about ripping up the regulations, because it just seems that there is no way to protect our families. Thank you for your time.
Steve Willard again. I just want to talk to you, just man to man. Basically, when I drive around the country, I don't care what county I'm in, especially when you leave the state, I see these miles of wind turbines, and invariably, ten to thirty percent of them already in turn. A lot of them got broken blades, the oil running down out of the motor, and miles and miles of wind turbines go. I remember driving I-70 out of Denver to see my brother, right there on the Slayne Ellis County line, that was the first wind farm there. Now you drive all the way across Ellis County, and it's, one of the wind farms disappears with another over here, another one over there. And that's what's going to happen in Jackson County. These solar farms are going to start springing up, not just around you. Five, ten years from now, it's going to be white. It's going to spread all over our county like a cancer. Like I said, leave the gate open, the horses and cows are going to leave. Everybody's going to come in here and try to do business. NextEra will start another cycle, or one of their competitors, or more. So we're only worried about four to six hours out of the day, and that's usually between ten to two or nine to three. If it's perfectly sunny, because when it's in the low horizon, it skips like a rotten pond, inefficient. So we're going to take the risk as a county, put this stuff on our, on our prized land we value our beauty in, that our comprehensive band plan is based on, for the next thirty years. Five years for construction, probably twice as that for decommissioning, will all be long gone. And that's what we're going to leave behind for our kids, to clean up our mess. And just the other day, the President of the United States dressed in uniform and told all the leaders, you guys are ruining your country with this green scam. Putting all this stuff there, and you're destroying your own countries. And that's exactly what we're going to do with our county. We're going to destroy it, and our children and grandchildren are going to inherit the tragedy we created by just getting this stuff started in our county. So please, either make the regulations building fight, they don't want to do business, or rip that hook in half, tell the commissioners, we don't want solar. We damn sure didn't want windmills. We don't want solar. It's real simple. Every poll I've looked at on Facebook or just talked to people around town, it's ninety-five out of a hundred don't want it. It's just a lot of people aren't quite as vocal as me. There's some sitting in the audience that have strong feelings, they just don't feel comfortable speaking. I kind of speak my mind, but you guys are talking to fourteen thousand people and solar commissioners.
Nine o'clock. Yeah, NextEra.
Okay. Let me just leave the board here for a moment. This is our last, um, public comment point at this for the other time. So thank the board. Thank you everyone for your, for your vote you've written, and as well as your verbal feedback that you provided, since we started this process earlier this spring. You've given us a lot to think about, and I think what the board should consider is scheduling our next work session to go over comments that everyone has provided recently. And that will go over to the board there. Does that sound favorable to everyone? I know the, uh, October's pretty well filled up because of the weather. It's early for our policy. I checked before being able to see if our next, remember beginning of August the thirteenth, which would be the sixth, the sixth is just a couple of days after the election. So the, now the clerk is still running, he's using my normal, normal main room, so that would seem to put the next, uh, closing the Thursday ceremony, the next possibility of work session on November twentieth. We'll have it at six o'clock, we'll have a session at six a.m. Does that sound?
There'll be a meeting on the thirteenth, or a meeting on the thirteenth. So you're wanting it next Thursday?
Right. We could wait to start that discussion if, if anybody, if agenda on the thirteenth, we could turn to it, work session after we've done the poll. It doesn't take the full time. And if it's tied, I'd be forced. Here. Give it one minute. We're going to go ahead and, if there's not, we have to start the session on the thirteenth.
It's five.
I know. Totally. We are eleven, I'm missing a story, I didn't know you were in, telling a agenda for that. Um, there's a good for shop down on ready. Our shop is at twenty-seven, I'm skeeled.
Can you not go?
We got a meeting to help those. Brings, brings our best.
Well, second.
Yeah, really, you guys can pick yourselves up. Wait, hold on. I'm going to finish my presentation.
Is this where you're going to change it? We got a billion things.
We talked to all the citizens, so we talked to them.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay.